Good morning, everybody. Welcome again to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to Meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, September 25th, 2002. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., and we do invite the public to join us in participating council meetings. For those of you unable to attend, City Council meetings can also be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brinson Delanter-Garcetti, Gruelhan Holden, Labange, Miskasie, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Burley, Thomas, Weiss, Sign, Padilla. Ten members present in the court, Mr. President.
Thank you very much for starting our business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weiss moves, and Mr. Burley-Thomas seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Labange moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, there are several items to continue. Item number three, a request from Building and Safety to receive and file that matter inasmuch as the assessment has been paid.
Item number three, members, request by the department is to receive and file without objection, so ordered.
Item number nine, a request, the applicant insists continuance to November 6th.
Item number nine, members, request to continue, granted also without objection.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, there are several commissioners to confirm. Do you wish to take that up now?
Let's take commission nominees first and bring them in groups if they're appointed to serve on the same commission.
Item, item number 10 and 12 are confirmation to the Cultural Affairs Commission, and that is a commission, excuse me, 10 and 11 are Commissioner, Cultural Affairs Commission, and those are communications from the chair and public hearing has not been held in committee.
Okay, items 10 and 11. Madam Clerk, would you please name the commission nominees?
Mr. Alfred Fong and Mr. Anthony De Los Rios.
If they come forward at this time, members, we do have a communication from committee, not a committee report recommending approval, but seeing no requests from members of the public, please have a seat. Seeing no requests from members of the public to address the council on these items, we shall deem the public hearing satisfied. Are there members of the council wishing to speak? Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Good morning, Commissioners-to-be.
Good morning.
I know you and your diligence and work in the San Fernando Valley and how you will add great benefits to cultural affairs. The Asian Pacific community represented in Los Angeles, as widespread as it is, can you just briefly explain how you're going to pull that together with cultural affairs?
I believe that culture, ours, are the most effective vehicles to bridge the difference of peoples and bring people together and improve.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome again to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, September 25th, 2002. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., and we do invite the public to join us in participating council meetings. For those of you unable to attend, city council meetings can also be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brinson Delanter-Garcetti, Gruelhan, Holden, Labange, Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Sain, Padilla, ten members present in the court, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weiss moves, and Mr. Ridley-Thomas seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Labange moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, there are several items to continue. Item number three, a request from Building and Safety to receive and file that matter inasmuch as the assessment has been paid.
Item number three, members, request by the department is to receive and file without objection, so ordered.
Item number nine, a request, the applicant contest continuance to November 6th.
Item number nine, members, request to continue, granted also without objection.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, there are several commissioners to confirm. Do you wish to take that up now?
Yeah, let's take commission nominees first and bring them in groups if they're appointed to serve on the same commission.
Item, item number 10 and 12 are confirmation to the Cultural Affairs Commission, and that is a commission, excuse me, 10 and 11 are Commissioner, Cultural Affairs Commission, and those are communications from the chair, and public hearing has not been held in committee.
Okay, items 10 and 11. Madam Clerk, would you please name the commission nominees?
Mr. Alfred Fong and Mr. Anthony De Los Rios.
If they come forward at this time, members, we do have a communication from committee, not a committee report recommending approval, but seeing no requests from members of the public, please have a seat. Seeing no requests from members of the public to address the council on these items, we shall deem the public hearing satisfied. Are there members of the council wishing to speak? Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. And good morning, commissioners-to-be.
Good morning.
The, I know you and your diligence and work in the San Fernando Valley, and how you will add great benefits to cultural affairs, the Asian Pacific community represented in Los Angeles, as widespread as it is. Can you just briefly explain how you're going to pull that together with cultural affairs?
Well, I believe that culture ours are the most effective vehicles to bridge the difference of peoples and bring people together and improve the quality of life of citizens in Los Angeles. So this Culture Affairs Commission is very important to use the resource of a city to build cultural centers, multiple culture center, multiple cultural events, to help people get along and bring harmony and peace to the city.
Thank you. And Anthony, how about you?
Yes, sir. My, my focus in the past has been on cultural affairs through being a member of the Board of Trustees at the Museum of Contemporary Art and president of the Board of Directors of L.A. Contemporary Exhibitions. I'm particularly interested in pushing the envelope a little bit for this department to see whether we can bring together the community art resources into the public schools. I was chairman of the Community Relations and Education Committee at Moca, and I saw firsthand how art can have a wonderful impact upon young people, sixth, seventh, eighth graders, and I would like to see if this department can act as a facilitator for bringing together artist groups, the various ethnicities throughout the city, and the public school district. I think that's something we ought to try.
I like that, push the envelope. That's the way to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on confirmation. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Congratulations, you were both approved. Thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, forthwith, please. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, item number one is confirmation of Diane Corral to the Quality and Productivity Commission, and the appointee is not able to be in council today.
I believe that is item number 12. Members of the council, public hearing have been held in committee on this item. Are there members wishing to be heard at this time? Beginning with Ms. Gruel.
Although Ms. Corral is not able to be here, she is going to be a great addition to this commission. I would ask all your approval. She is one of those activist homeowners who has participated in the betterment of her community, and we are going to be lucky to have her as part of our team, so I would just ask for approval here today.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Other members? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That commissioner is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Item number 13 is also confirmation of Mr. Daniel Falcon Jr. to the Construction Services Committee, and that is a communication from the chair of the Planning, Land Use Management Committee. Public hearing has not been held.
I see Mr. Falcon knows what to do. He's already up here. And again, members, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on this item, so we shall deem the public hearing satisfies. Chair recognizes Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. The Construction Services Committee is a committee that we all should know more about. It's a committee that essentially handles resources and how we supplement the Building and Safety Department and the Planning Department. Now, what's key here is that when we engage our communities, our ability to communicate, to pass permits, to make sure that accountability is there for both departments, we need technology, we need a level of input in how we update their equipment. This is with great pleasure that, I'd like to thank Mr. Falcon for his contribution of his time. Some of you might not know, but when he entered this city, he entered at a time when we were rebuilding after the riots. And I won't brag about how many units he actually got constructed as part of that, but the truth of the matter is, he understands policy, he understands process, and I think he'll make a great addition to the committee in his insight as both a person who understands the notion of can-do and understand technology, so hopefully I would great, build up too much of a good expectation of you, Mr. Falcon. Would you like to say any words?
I'd just like to say thank you to the council for the nomination and the appointment, and hopefully in advance for the vote, and I look forward to working with everyone to make sure that we bring the best we can to the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Falcon.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Forthwith, please. Next item.
Item number 26 is confirmation of Tyrone Freeman to the Board of Fire Commissioners.
Mr. Freeman.
And public hearing has not been held in committee. Communication from Public Safety Committee.
And I do not have a request from the public to address the council on this item as well, so we shall deem the public hearing satisfied. Members wishing to be heard, beginning with Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Good morning to you.
Good morning.
Your experience has been wide in the field of representing people. In the fire service, they protect people. We have a Class 1 fire department, and as these fires we see erupting around our region, consuming all the vegetation and people fleeing their homes, we always rely upon the fire service for a variety of things. Fire service, paramedic service, the EMS, the EMS services that we've heard this week in council, they're going to be pressed even more because of the cutbacks, because of the state budget, because of the closures by the county. Do you have any idea or concepts what we can do to help shore up some of those problems with the EMS, paramedic service?
Thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come before the council today. I think in addressing that issue that it will involve what has already been taking place by the fire department, which is community involvement and understanding of what the issues are and relative to the service to be delivered to the community. In my experience in labor and understanding the cutbacks in healthcare, we've come to find out that we have to work as a team, both in our issues from the labor perspective and management perspective, and we have to find ways to open up the pie. The pie I refer to is that of the budget, whether it be collectively going to the state or federal government, and finding out, and also could include going to the people. And I think that as we face the issue of the crisis in America for healthcare, that the focus and experience I have will, will bring that attention to the issue in the fire department, and look forward to work with the community to address the issues. But I think we can resolve it, and I think the community will stand behind the services that EMS delivers.
Thank you, and you do have a background in that arena of healthcare.
Oh, absolutely. That's all I've done is represent. I represent over 100,000 healthcare workers in Los Angeles County and over 60,000 in the city who provide care to seniors and those with disabilities in our community.
And I see that the fire chief is here, which is inspiring to know that we have a general manager that comes to support commissioners, and also the president of the fire commission is here with his arm around the fire chief, so it's nice to have a good relationship. And you'll, you'll add wonderful benefit to that, because we do have a wonderful fire department, and working with Jay and the other commissioners, I'm sure you do well in just maintaining and enhancing the fire and EMS operations in Los Angeles.
Thank you.
You definitely have my vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Ridley-Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, I rise to commend this nomination. Tyrone Freeman has distinguished himself as a leader in our city on a range of issues, not the least of which refer to the quality of life of seniors and those who are dependent on the resources and assistance of others to cause them to live in a manner of dignity. It seems to me that one of the reasons that the fire department is valued is because they demonstrate over and over again a high degree of professionalism driven by a commitment to help those in need, often those who are in crisis. Mr. Freeman has a head and a heart for the very same, and it would seem to me his professional as well as academic training and/or preparation suits him well to serve in the capacity of a commissioner on the Board of Fire Commissioners, bringing that unique perspective and broadening their view of what it means to impact this particular population, a person who he most intimately knows in terms of the home bound. The paramedic service is part of what makes Los Angeles stand out, and the fire chief as well as the commission itself and the entirety of the fire department deserve our regular praise for the routine and yet extraordinary way in which they carry out their responsibilities. I believe that Tyrone Freeman will be an enhancement, and would, without reservation, appeal to you to unanimously support his nomination.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just joined the chorus in very much supporting Mr. Freeman, who's been a fighter for social and economic justice and has built the largest local union now west of the Mississippi, somebody who we've joined on this council in supporting your efforts at the county level and been very strong counsel in supporting that. I assure you today, we will be supporting your, your new role as a commissioner for this great city, and we look forward to serving with you. And in strongest terms, I urge my colleagues to join me.
Thank you.
Ms. Gruel.
Well, I don't want to repeat everything that everyone said, so I'll say ditto to all of that, but just want to add that you being on the fire commission and what you have done with your union and bringing people together, making sure that we're working efficiently and cooperatively, and that you're really going to be an extraordinary addition to the city family. I think we feel you're that way anyways, but now officially as a commissioner, so join my colleagues in embracing your appointment and obviously vote today in that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Mr. Reyes.
Colleagues, I rise to support this nominee.
Thank you, Council.
Mr. Williams, I had the pleasure of meeting with you, along with my staff, Arturo Chavez, at a park, Lincoln Park, and we had many members of the constituency you represent. And what struck me the most was that, in that setting, there were hundreds of people, and I heard every language. I heard Spanish, I heard different dialects, Asian Pacific communities, but they were dealing with senior issues, which was the common bond that brought everyone together. Now, in the fire commission, we need to start thinking about how we deal with issues, policies that understands the idiosyncrasies of our diverse cultures. How we treat people, how we respect our seniors is of very, very high value in all cultures, cultures, but they all have their idiosyncrasies. So how we get folks to work with us in critical moments, moments of crisis, is key. So I appreciate your being there, knowing that you are able to represent a whole array of constituencies within the senior population. I want to thank you for your good work.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Tabey. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And everyone had some very nice contributions. I just flashed what Ed was talking one time right there in his district. Years ago, I was driving down Seventh Street, and the fire doors were open at Fire Station 11, and there was no apparatus. Usually the doors close after the alarm. So I stopped and I looked to call headquarters, because the doors were open, and then all of a sudden, a woman came running into the station to report a fire, because she got a call from her neighbor. Turned out, her neighbor didn't call 911, but called her at her work at a beauty shop down on Seventh Street, and she ran to the firehouse instead of calling. What Ed just mentioned, as far as the diversity of Los Angeles and the language, and the need to inform all our populace, the most effective way to communicate to get the resources necessary, is a very important thing. So if I want to just second that motion, because when you said that, Ed, I thought of that woman who lived near Belmont High School but worked down near MacArthur Park and didn't think to call, but thought to run to the firehouse, because maybe that's what happened from wherever she came from to live in our city now, and not understanding the complexities of a very integrated system. The fire wasn't a bad fire, it was food on the stove, but it was significant enough that a lot of resource had to come, but I think that's just a very important thing. And you're going to absolutely have one of the greatest personal experiences, because this fire department and its history and dedication to service is outstanding, and the fire chief and his administration and staff and every firefighter in Los Angeles answers an alarm right now to help the people, and you're going to be able to see how that's done and find ways to help improve that and, and make it better for the people of Los Angeles. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Pacheco.
Good morning, Council.
Mr. President, colleagues, I just wanted to commend Mr. Freeman for volunteering to do this service. We don't pay you much here, but we appreciate that. We don't pay him anything? Nothing? You're a kind soul, Ms. Freeman. I just want to tell you, welcome to the family here. We know you've been working very hard to improve the structure and the health system and the home care system for all of our residents, and just want to tell you, welcome to the family.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Labange.
To commissioners in Los Angeles, and any commission, get any, any compensation?
I understand. They all proactively.
That's right.
Agree to serve on a volunteer basis.
All commissioners, thank you very much.
With the exception of the Public Works Commission.
Thank you.
Mr. Holden.
How are you?
I'm doing fine, Councilman.
Very good. I'm going to ask you that six months from now. You, Eleanor Glenn had the job, and then who has followed Ms. Glenn, and then you? Who's the other person?
Affilia McFadden.
Ms. McFadden, that is correct. And what they don't know here is that you represent a class of workers who provide a service. Most people who are ill, at home, can't take care of themselves, these are the people you, you represent who takes care of them.
That's correct.
They provide the service which the most thankless job, but is one of the most important jobs, home care workers. I guess you still have any idea how much you contribute to supporting these workers who helped make so many of our lives happy, when we have a relative or friend shut in at home due to illness, but want to commend you for that.
Thank you.
I took notice of the fact that all the council persons, they stood up and they spoke, and they said nice things about you. But, you know, then you ask them, you take a survey after the next election, and the ones, you don't endorse them, or if you do. But nevertheless, I know you won't hold anything against them, and they won't hold it against you, and that you do a good job. This is a tough job you've taken on. You've got the paramedics program, the firefighters program, and the healthcare related to the business that you're in, and that I can't think of any more, any person more qualified and committed to providing the best healthcare than you, Mr. Freeman, because you had that group.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members wishing to be heard? I think just about everybody's had a chance to speak by now, and we're ready for a vote. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
I'll see you at the coffee shop.
Thanks.
Forthwith, please, on all commission appointees today. Next item.
Item number 27 is confirmation of the reappointment of Ms. Edna E.J. Francis to the Employee Relations Board.
Is she here? She's coming forward.
And a public hearing has not been held in committee.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on this commission nominee. Are there members of the council wishing to be heard on this item? Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Employee Relations Board, very important when it comes to the city workforce, employee relations, and having a previous background with a labor union, I know the importance of the Employee Relations Board, how we bring people together and get resolution. Can you briefly explain some of your background in that arena?
My background, for the, since approximately 1981, I've been strictly a neutral, serving either as an arbitrator or a mediator or an ad hoc hearing officer. Prior to that, for a brief period of time, I was a labor attorney.
So you do have experience in that field?
I do, yes.
And if labor and management pull together, then oftentimes we can resolve many of those problems?
Correct.
And when they get to the commission, then obviously we failed somewhere along the line, not reaching those understandings?
That's correct. Although we, even if they reach our, our board, we, we do attempt to, through our executive director, to resolve them so that they don't have to come before the board. We're not always successful, but many times we are.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Forthwith, please. Madam Clerk, does that conclude all commission nominees today?
Yes, it does, Mr. President.
Okay, before continuing with the regular agenda, Chair recognizes Mr. Reyes for a presentation. Mr. Reyes. Mr. Reyes.
I'd like to invite Councilman Pacheco to join me. Here he comes. Thank you for your indulgence. Thank you, Councilman Pacheco. Members of the council, this weekend will mark the 8th Annual Chicano Film Festival, Sine Sin Fin, which was started in East Los Angeles for and by Chicanos. The film festival was established to provide a venue for Chicano filmmakers, actors, and producers with the intent of empowering those whose films personify and humanize the Chicano experience. The films shown range from narratives to documentaries to avant-garde. It's a community event which actually brings families, students, and the curious together. The films themselves range in length from four minutes to over an hour and will be shown in several theaters, including the Million Dollar Theater and the Highland Park Theater, one in CD-14 and one in CD-1. And among those films, there's one particular that we are honoring today, and it's called Symbol of the Heart, the official documentary of the East L.A. classic. Symbol of the Heart was the winner for Outstanding Television Documentary at Imahin Awards 2002. It is a documentary of the East Los Angeles classic, which captures over 70 years of tradition and intense rivalry between two neighborhood high schools, the Roosevelt Rough Riders and Garfield Bulldogs. For decades, over 22,000 alumni and friends have gathered to celebrate and attend this regular season high school football game. I'm sure Mr. Labange would enjoy that. What you should also know is that in the year 2000, because it had outgrown the East Los Angeles College Stadium, the game was moved to Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum, where over 33,000 supporters gathered to witness this historic event. To date, it is probably one of the most attended high school games this side of the Mississippi. Some have even estimated that this year's crowd could reach into the 50,000 range. Both schools both have long lists of distinguished alumni, such as Mike Garrett, Heisman Trophy winner and NFL Super Champion, Paul Gonzalez, the first Mexican-American U.S. Olympic boxing champion. The East L.A. classic is more than a football game. It's a celebration of community, pride, and honor. And we are here to honor three young men who put the film together. But before we ask the recipients to step up, I'd like to invite Councilman Pacheco to the microphone.
Mr. President, colleagues, first of all, I just want to repeat one thing that Councilmember Reyes pointed out, and you have to kind of visualize this. This is a game, I'm talking about the game, the East L.A. classic, that grew so large that it had to be moved into the Coliseum. And there aren't too many events at the Coliseum right now. There are some significant events, soccer games, those weekend motocross and the big trucks, and USC football, and, but we do know that this game has grown to that degree and it really highlights that Carmona Productions was able to capture that. And they've also worked on different films. One was called In Search of Aslan, Evolution of the Beast, The Story of Fernando Vargas, God's Penitentiary, and Oye Magazine. The one documentary they haven't finished, guys, is the one they did when they were completely, I think, 24 hours shadowing my opponent in my first election. So they haven't finished that documentary, right, guys?
Let it go, Nick. Let it go.
No, I want to, I want to see it. But basically, these individuals really try to do grassroots productions and get to the heart of what's going on, and I think their project on the East L.A. classic, the Roosevelt-Garfield game, really reflects their desire to be true to not only their subject matter, but to the whole profession of being artists, and so we want to commend them for doing that work.
Thank you, Councilman Pacheco. I'd like to call up Gabriel Carmona. He's executive producer of the Symbol of the Heart, the documentary of the Roosevelt-Garfield High School, and congratulations in your accomplishment, Gabriel.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Labange.
I've got two more. I'd like to call up Alfonso Espinoza, associate producer and editor. Alfonso?
And last but not least, Miguel Torres, also producer of Symbol of the Heart.
Mr. Reyes, Mr. Labange wishes to say a few words.
No, I just wanted to, Mr. President, members of the council, it is wonderful to, that you honor these filmmakers to capture what is a really wonderful story of Los Angeles' history, deep rooted between Roosevelt and Garfield. And I have friends from both schools, and it's such an exciting week when they play and the buildup of that, no matter what the records of the teams are, but it's a great history. So, but for you to capture that as documentary filmmakers will be something for people to see and live on. And I will state, though, my absolute favorite Los Angeles Dodger is a Roosevelt High School graduate. He was the fastest Dodger to ever play the game. He played centerfield, number three, Willie Davis, who still holds the city long jump record champ, I think at 26 feet, eight inches from Roosevelt High School. So God bless Roosevelt High, God bless Garfield.
You never cease to amaze me, Mr. Labange. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes.
Thank you once again. On behalf of Carmona Productions, we would like to thank the members of the City Council. We also like to thank Honorable Reyes and Nick Pacheco. We'd like to thank our friends, our family, who those who were able to attend and those who were not able to attend. We produced Symbol of Heart because we grew up in the community. I am a Roosevelt grad, and this was a story that needed to be told. And my partners reluctantly didn't want to do it, but in the end, they were very, very supportive, and without these two guys behind me, this project would have never have become a reality. So as Carmona Productions, this is what we want to do, is we want to continue to tell positive stories about our community, and Symbol of Heart, the official documentary of the East L.A. classic, is something special, and I'm glad we did it because it needed to be told and it needed to be told properly. And last but not least, we would like to thank the Honorable Gil Sedia. Without his support, we would not be here today. So we'd like to thank him, and we know he's in New York, and we also invite you to please come out this Saturday, September 28th, at 5:30, the Highland Theater, to watch Symbol of Heart, the official documentary of the East L.A. classic. And the funding of this project goes, 30% of the sales of this video will go towards scholarships, 30 to Garfield High School, 30% will go to Roosevelt High School. So this is a history of our community, a history of the city of Los Angeles, and as well as a history of the United States, because these alumni, they don't stay in the community, they move out, and, but they always remember the East L.A. classic, they always remember the Garfield-Roosevelt game. Doesn't matter your ethnicity, whether you're Hispanic, black, white, doesn't matter. Everybody comes together for that one week to support, show their colors, and be proud to say they attended these high schools, and it's a great, great tradition. So thank you once again, and thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, councilmembers. I just want to emphasize that it is great to have people from our neighborhoods come back and have this sophisticated talent and show the world, the mainstream, that we have a strong story to tell, and there's a strong audience out there and that you're missing out. Thank you very much.
And, Council President Padilla knows this best, but Assemblymember Gil Sedia was all-league quarterback at Roosevelt High School when he was there. Right? No comment.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Items noticed for public hearings. Items 1, 2, and 4, 5, and 6 are confirmations of building and safety assessments.
Okay. Those matters now before us. I do have cards on item number 4, let's call that special. On the balance of the items, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. We shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Are there members wishing to call any specials? Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, by way of special request, I move suspension of the rule so that we can take item number 56 out of order, so that the persons here wishing to testify can do so and be dispatched to their respective workplaces.
Appreciate that request, Mr. Ridley Thomas. If we can do what we did yesterday and just sweep through the agenda, call item special, it'll take a minute or two, and we'll take item 56 as the first item.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Perry.
Wanted to continue item 4. I've had a request to continue it for two weeks.
Members request to continue item number 4 for two weeks. That would be October 9th.
And item number 7, continued for one week.
Okay. Item number 4, first without objection, that matter is continued for two weeks. The hearing date is October 9th. Request to continue item number 7 for one week to October 2nd, also without objection. On the balance of the items, are there any other specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
I do have one speaker card on item number 4, Jesus and Sofia Aguayo. Please be advised that item number 4 has been continued. Next items, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number 8 is a planning and land use and management committee report has been submitted, and it's a specific plan exception appeal in Council District 11.
Item number 8. Members wishing to call item 8 special? Mr. Garcetti?
To move?
Madam Clerk, I believe we have a report with recommendations before us on item number 8. Any members wishing to call that special?
Go ahead, call it special. Or no, go ahead and move, let's go ahead and move that.
Let's go ahead and proceed with the vote. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item number 8. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next items, Mr. President. Items for which public hearings have been held, items 14 through 25, and I understand there is an amending motion on item number 16, which has been distributed. Do you wish to call that one special?
Is that amending motion technical in nature?
It changes the ordinance, and a new ordinance has also been, is also on the desk in front of council.
Let's call 16 special, then. And members, are there any other specials on these items? Public hearings haven't been held. We are on items 14 through 25 at this time. 14 through 25, any other specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those matters are approved, items 14 and 15 being ordinances. Hold over for a second reading. Next items, please.
Next items, items for which public hearings have not, excuse me, have not been held, items 26 through 54.
Items 28 through 30, through 54.
28 through 54, sorry.
26 and 27 haven't been acted upon. Items 28 through 54 now before us. I understand we had a request to continue item number 44, 45, and 46 to the 27th, which is Friday, without objection, members. So ordered on items 44, 45, and 46. On the balance of the items, are there any specials? Any other specials? We'll get there, Mr. Zine. On the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved, items 28, 29, 30, 31, and 32 being ordinances. Hold over for a second reading. Next items, please.
Next item is the closed session. Do you wish to, item number 55, do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold closed session items on the desk. Items 59 and 60, closed session items are held on the desk as well.
And item 56, I believe Mr. Ridley Thomas called that one special.
Call that one special and take that matter first when we return to items called special.
Items on...
Mr., I'm sorry, you didn't call 58. We, I'm sorry?
Just getting there.
Thank you. The special item, sorry.
Okay. Items 57 and 58. I believe Ms. Grul wanted to call 58 special.
And I believe Mr. Zine wants to call 57 special. Okay. If that concludes the agenda, we now return to items called special. We've had a request to take item 56 first because of a number of people have come to testify. Mr. Weiss, followed by Mr. Labange.
Procedural matter, I'd move to reconsider item 52, and then I would further move to hold it on the desk or continue it till Friday. There's some technical language that needs to be worked out, I'm informed.
Okay. Motion to reconsider item number 52. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Item 52 is now back before us. Let's hold it on the desk. Mr. Labange.
For a quick introduction, Mr. President, members of council, we have with us today the steps to explore potential visiting us today. They're all back there from the 15th district, from Janus-Hans area. A special welcome to all of you here to Los Angeles City Hall. Don't forget it to go up to the tower. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Welcome to all of you. Your councilwoman's doing a fine job. She happens to be in Washington, D.C. today lobbying on the city's behalf. You should be very proud of her. Thank you for visiting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number 56 was called special by Councilmember Ridley Thomas.
Mr. Ridley Thomas, public hearing has been held on item 56. I do have a few speaker cards submitted. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, first, I'd like to move the committee report, that is Rules and Elections and Governmental Relations, which is the Ridley, Thomas, Perry, Padilla, Garcetti, Pacheco, Action on Support of the Principles for a More Secure Los Angeles. I would also seek to move a five-minute public hearing on the matter and proceed with the balance of the discussion as the president so indicates.
We now have the public hearing for item number 56. We have a number of cards submitted. I believe all are on the same side of this one, so I will ask for brevity, and maybe you can all come forward and speak together. Let me read the names. Jason Pope, Jono Schaefer, Richard Burgendahl, Sofia Laurena Destine, David Tenorio, and Tracy Gray Barkin. Please come forward at this time.
Good morning. Ready? Good morning, councilmembers. My name's Jono Schaefer. I'm the director of the Security Program for the Service Employees International Union nationally. Many of you know us as the Janitors Union, but we're also the largest security union in the United States with over 20,000 members nationwide. The reality is, it's time to enact higher standards for private security. If our city is to be safe, we need responsible security contractors who will provide training commensurate with the duties that they ask their officers to perform. We need contractors who will follow all applicable labor laws and employment laws. We need citywide standards to ensure that secure buildings and safe communities. We need better coordination between the security officers in the private sector and our public safety officials in the police and fire departments. Most importantly, we need a professional, well-trained, and stable security workforce. The reality is, is that current standards in the security industry dictate, mean that there's over 100 to 300% turnover in the private security industry. When you go to a building, you're likely to see a new person every day. We cannot demand world-class security from officers who make poverty wages and receive substandard training. These principles seem like they are common sense, that you wouldn't need a city council resolution. But unfortunately, the reality is that in Los Angeles, folks are encountering tremendous resistance in their efforts to raise standards. Our union has projects underway in New York, San Francisco, and Chicago, which are, in which we're meeting with building owners, security contractors, public safety officials, with great results. But in Los Angeles, we can't get off first base. So we need to make Los Angeles step up to the plate. This resolution will go a long way to making that happen. We urge your yes vote. Thank you very much.
My name is Sofia Laurenia Destine, and I have been a security officer for seven years. I'm here today in support of the resolution for the principle of a more secure L.A. Citywide security standards need to be established in Los Angeles, and all security contractors must be required to meet them to truly ensure secure buildings and safe communities. Lives and property are placed in jeopardy on a daily basis in our, I'm sorry, in our society due to substanding... in our society due to substanding training, low wages, and little respect for officers who are asked to secure them. I urge you to vote yes on the resolution, please. Thank you.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is David Tenorio. I've been a security officer for over ten years, and I'm here today in support of the resolution for the principles of a more secure LA. To ensure that our city is safe as it can be, we better, we need better coordination among security, police, fire, and rescue personnel and emergency responses. As the events of nine eleven revealed, all these organizations need to mobilize together if threats to our city become a reality. With proper training and better equipment and coordination, all security personnel, our city will be made much more secure. I urge you to vote yes on the resolution, and thank you.
My name is Richard Burgendahl. I've been a security officer for twenty-three years. I'm here today in support of the resolution for principles of a more secure LA. Workforce stability is critical, providing professional, high-quality security. Turnover in the private security industry is extremely high, and this can be linked directly to security officers' low pay and lack of benefits. The private security industry needs to be professional and ensure that our city's buildings are safe at any level, and our communities are secure. I urge you to vote yes on this resolution. Thank you very much.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Jason Pope, and I'm here representing the thirty thousand members of SEIU Local eighteen seventy-seven. Security employers in Los Angeles have shown that they are not willing to make the changes to improve the private security industry on their own. This resolution will go a long way to stop the intimidation that security officers currently face in attempting to initiate any positive changes. It will also give workers the democratic freedom to choose the union of their choice and prevent employers like Universal Protection Service from forcing them into weak company unions. For example, Universal Protection Services is currently threatening security officers with loss of employment or transfer to less desirable positions if they support our efforts to raise the standards. Your yes vote on this resolution will help prevent further employee intimidation and make Los Angeles safer and more secure. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tracy Gray Barkin. I'm with the Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy, and I'm here to speak in support of the resolution before you. We feel like, we feel that raising the wages of the security personnel to at least a living wage with benefits would thereby raise the standard of living of the community they come from in South Central. So we ask you to vote yes on this resolution. Thanks.
Thank you all very much for your testimony. This concludes public comment on this item. Returning now to council discussion, Mr. Ridley-Thomas, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Let me just commend the committee for moving this item forward. It seeks to encourage the raising of standards for hiring security guards. It seeks to provide them with fair compensation in the form of a living wage and health benefits. And it essentially goes to the larger set of issues that surround the question of security and the question of fairness. It would seem to me that when we think about nine eleven, the most significant notion that occurs to us is the apprehending of those who were responsible for those terrorist acts. We do that in the name of justice and pursuit of justice. More specific than that, it is a criminal justice issue. But I wish to cause the council to expand this notion of justice today and think as broadly as possible when we want to consider securing our buildings, making for a safer environment for those who work in those buildings and those who have to utilize the services in those buildings. It is a question of justice as it relates to the compensation of those who are employed to protect and to serve, if you will. In other words, there's an economic justice issue here as well as a criminal justice issues as we think about the question of nine eleven. And so this resolution seeks to encourage us to expand our understanding of what justice is really about, and it visits this notion right at the doorstep of those who are decision-makers in the private sector and say that justice must be done by the workers, namely, better training, namely, better compensation, because they are to be valued by virtue of what it is they do, and they are there to protect those who live around those buildings, those who work in those buildings, and those who use the services in those buildings. I commend this to you and would respectfully request the unanimous vote for the principles for more secure Los Angeles. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Ridley-Thomas, for bringing this forward, and I'm really pleased to see all of you here today. I think we know as a city, and we recognize that worker security means personal security. Worker security means community security. Worker security means homeland security, and at a time that you hear more and more discussions about making sure that our cities, our communities, our neighborhoods are safe, we must recognize that in the way that we treat the safety of our workers who are protecting us. And here today, we stand with you. I say that this council, I dare say unanimously, will stand with you to make sure that this is the beginning of a campaign, and we hope that you don't leave us once we get this resolution. We stand ready to be with you side by side out there, to march alongside you, to take actions with you, and do whatever it takes to make sure that this sort of justice comes to you that you deserve at a time that the country is calling on you to do your part to make us all secure. So, thank you, and I urge everybody's unanimous approval.
Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. On that march, can we make it when it's not a hundred and five degrees in the San Fernando Valley, please? I'll join you in that endeavor, but I don't want the hundred and five temperature out there. Thank you. I come from a law enforcement background, and I've always questioned why there's not a closer relationship between the private security operations and law enforcement, whether it be the sheriffs, the LAPD, Highway Patrol, or whatever. I know that after September eleventh, LAX went through revamping. The federal government is now interceded. Wages have been increased. Compensation's been increased. Training's been increased, and we now have a different focus. The state regulates this. The state of California decides what the requirements are going to be. Clearly, the requirements have to be enhanced. Clearly, the training has to be enhanced. And when I look at the security officer, security guards working some miserable days, some miserable hours, some miserable locations, and they're always vigilant, they're always watchful. So I support this measure. It's long overdue, but along those lines, we need to make sure that it doesn't die with us supporting this resolution, that the motion take place in Sacramento, since this is obviously a state entity that controls this. And back to nineteen forty-seven, when the state decided they would license, they would get involved in the oversight of security throughout the state of California, and there are hundreds of people in your position throughout the state that are working for less than minimum, less than prevailing, less than decent wages, and are doing that job every single day. And that one gentleman, twenty-some years, I believe, you mentioned that you were involved in that security operation, which is commendable. And it's about time that we recognize, because of security needs, and we've enhanced our security here at City Hall because of the necessities, but all the buildings and all the facilities that you protect and the people that you screen at those different places where they hire you are all concerned about the same thing. So it's taken many, many years to come to this point, but you got my support, and good luck to you on this mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zine. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I also want to commend all of you for coming down today and for making the statements, the heartfelt statements that you did. You know, and Mr. Ridley-Thomas and I were just discussing the fact that there's a state legislative piece here, and then there are principles that we are establishing here. But I think, I think he would agree that at core, we need to change the way the state as a whole does business in this variety, and that's why we are all very pleased that very soon, the gentleman to my right is going to be making laws for the state of California, and he's going to be pushing this agenda in Sacramento, and we're all grateful to him for that, aren't we? And it's important because, and you know this, when you wear a uniform, a private security guard uniform, it can be a terrorist attack, it can be a traffic accident. People turn to you. People turn to you, all sorts of people. Children, the elderly, people with special needs and disabilities turn to you for assistance. And the government has to do a better job of partnering with you and with your sector in the private sector to make sure that your jobs are respected, that you are treated with the dignity and respect commensurate with the uniform you wear, and indeed, that you are treated on the front end with the dignity and respect that people in an emergency will treat you with. And at the, at the end of the day, if there is a crisis of any sort, people are relying on you, and you will be able to tell by the looks in their faces, by the looks in their eyes, that they're relying on you. We need to show you at the front end that we have that same level of respect for you. And I'm very proud to join Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Ridley-Thomas, and others here in supporting you today. Thank you for coming.
Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I read with great interest, there was an article in the paper the other day, I think it was the LA Times, about the loss of security jobs at places like LAX to people of color, or people of color are losing those jobs, and I believe this principles that we will be supporting today will go a long way to help raise the standards, not only to provide the workers with more support and more substantive training and better wages, and perhaps we can refute or turn that trend around. So I'm pleased that I was able to support them in the meeting we had at Ward A and E several weeks ago, and look forward to seeing this pass through the state, and I'm glad that the city council is offering its support.
Mr. Pacheco? Mr. Pacheco?
Mr. President, colleagues, I just wanted to rise in support of not only our workers at the airport, but generally as we go through this whole issue of raising standards in all industries, it's not just your industry, but all industries, that we make sure that that's not an excuse by employers to try to get rid of certain people, because we've seen that happen in too many situations, or in case of, the most recent problem we had or struggle we had, where there was a new contractor who tried to use the new contract to get rid of old employees, and we all went through that a couple of years ago. And so let's just make sure that as we go through this whole process, that we're not sacrificing our workers and their rights to continue to be employed. And so I just want to say I support, obviously like everyone else, that we have appropriate standards, but I think the workers should be given an opportunity to meet those standards and retain their jobs. Thank you.
Mr. Holden?
Maybe someone can tell me, it says the bills in Sacramento would subject preparatory guards to the regulations of the state agencies. Currently, such guards are exempt. It requires greater training and registrants, required refresher courses every year. I'm just wondering, what does that mean? Does it mean that a person who left high school, tenth grader or so on, is there written examination that is going to be required? Maybe it could hold my time as president, why someone come to the table and tell me what this really represents? Well, maybe you can, sir, if you... Mr. Thomas? The question is, if a person, is it, will these new requirements require a high school diploma, will it require passing a written examination, the principles for safe security...
The specifics have been spelled out in the state legislation in terms of what has been suggested, in terms of the elevation of the standard and training. That's a matter that we already acted on, and those matters have been processed through the legislature. What's before us today happens to be the four principles that we want to see operative in the city of Los Angeles. And it really is incumbent upon the private sector employers, Mr. Holden, to adhere to these principles that we want to suggest. This is a resolution.
I understand. Once you set the standard...
Right.
And make it applicable across the board...
Yes.
Some people are going to fall through the net...
That's correct.
Some people be caught in the net.
Correct.
And some people who are currently employed...
Yes.
Based on the fact that they meet the minimum qualification without having periodic examination...
Correct.
Will be unemployed, could be unemployed.
Yes.
And that's why I raised the question. What does the bill represent? And the other reason why I raised the question, because these bills left the house of origin, and it died wherever they are. This legislative session has ended, which means that unless they have interim hearings, it's a closed deal, and it has to be reintroduced...
Yes.
Next year.
Correct.
Okay? So I, do you all understand that? Okay, fine. Which means that Mr. Thomas, I can assure you, will be the author, or at least the principal co-author, of this legislation. All I was really interested in at this point in time is that what falls through the cracks? This sounds good. There's been a good reason why it's been the way it is. You can, you can require, for example, at liquor stores, that when we have a security guard on duty, that they must meet the minimum requirements that is established by the state of California, whereas they have examinations every year, whereas they meet these requirements. I'm not sure, when you carry that legislation, that you're going to get across the board, because in some cases where the guard material are out there, that may not be, you may not need that requirement. You don't need to be a PhD to be a fireman, as you understand the point of view.
I do.
So therefore, you're going to have a better chance of getting that legislation through if we then, at local level, say what the requirement shall be for certain positions to provide security in those areas that we regulate.
And that's precisely what's before us, but we are attempting to prompt the private sector employers to get on with that so that there's a certain level of training that they would support, as well as making these jobs decent with respect to compensation and benefits, which is currently not the standard today.
The private sector is going to fight it because of the wages.
Correct.
Okay, so the fact that...
That's why the resolution is to urge them today.
You will not get concurrence. You get what you can get concurrence on, and what you can get concurrence on is what they really are requesting. I'll talk to you about it later.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your support, Mr. Holden.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item fifty-six. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Unanimous vote, that is approved. Send this matter forth with, please, Mr. Ridley-Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me just simply acknowledge the work of the organizations involved with advancing these principles, namely, SEIU Local eighteen seventy-seven, the organization Agenda, and the host of other entities that are attempting to make for a decent standard of living and the quality of life for the workers and their families. And to all the members, thank you for your unanimous support.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, item number fifty-two was reconsidered by council, and Mr. Weiss is requesting that that matter be continued to September twenty-seventh, which is Friday.
Members request to continue item number fifty-two to this Friday, without objection, so ordered? Next item?
Item number sixteen is before council. Amending motion has been distributed, and a new ordinance is before the council.
Okay, is there any discussion, I understand, to make any changes? We do need a motion from the floor. Mr. Holden, you move an amending motion, a new substitute ordinance, or what's your motion here?
And both.
Okay. Motion for Mr. Holden is for the amending motion and the substitute ordinance. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That motion is approved.
Mr. President, the city attorney told me to do that, so I did. Mr. President, the city attorney told me to do that, so I did.
Next item, please.
And the ordinance is over one week, inasmuch as there were only 11 members.
Yes, one week. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 57 was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine, item 57.
Mr. President, colleagues, do we have someone here from Personnel Department? We do, approaching the table.
Good morning.
Good morning. A couple of questions I have on this matter that was waived through the Personnel and Public Safety Committee. The polygraph and the background examinations, I know that we have contracted with outside poly examiners, and we increased the package for city employees to recruit more poly examiners. Does this proposal just deal with out-of-state poly exams and not local?
It deals with out-of-state, and also if we cannot get the resources from the Police Department to expeditiously process candidates.
No, you mean process? You talking about background investigation?
No, the examination, the polygraph examination itself. If their resources are limited to where we cannot schedule somebody for three or four weeks out, we will use the examiner in order to move them, or the contractor, in order to move them through the process quicker.
Local?
Correct.
Okay, now with out-of-state candidates, will there be background investigations done by this group, or will that still be the responsibility of the Police Department?
It will still be the responsibility of the Police Department unless they determine that there are issues that need to be investigated, perhaps on the East Coast, they don't have the resource to send somebody, they would then perhaps use the contractor for that purpose.
Okay, so the concern I have is we're expanding the contractor from a poly examination, and in some cases to a background investigation, from an outside source, not an LAPD personnel or a city personnel. Do you find a conflict or a problem with that?
The first polygraph examination, even for an out-of-town candidate, will always be done by the Police Department here locally. We bring candidates in for an expedited process for three days, so they don't have to make a number of trips. We would use an out-of-town examiner only if issues came up during their background investigation that needed to be resolved, or if the results of the first examination were inconclusive. But they'll always see somebody from the Police Department in the beginning.
So it'll be then follow-up to the initial exam by LAPD, LA City personnel?
Correct.
Okay, I thought it was, the way it reads, it could be primary screening, I was concerned that we would maintain that integrity within the city family.
If it is used for a primary polygraph examination, LAPD would be doing the background investigation.
Okay. But there will be cases where this outside firm could do a background investigation?
More than likely only-
Or a follow-up investigation?
-a follow-up to LAPD's initial work.
But not the initial background, just the follow-up?
Correct.
Okay, that's good. That satisfies my curiosity and questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 58 was called special by Councilmember Groll.
Ms. Groll.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. If I could have representatives from Public Works, please come up. I know he was here earlier, Claire. I knew you were here somewhere. Colleagues, we're going to ask our representative from Public Works to make a few comments. I want to ask you some questions, but if you could do a brief presentation. This is a project that is on Tahunga Canyon Boulevard in my district, where there's been over 50 traffic accidents in the last eight years, 11 in this past year alone. And what happens if you've gone that way, it goes from two lanes down to one lane in a curve, and there's been some concerns. At the same time, there is, there are large oak trees, and because of the size and stature of those and questions, I had asked the department to make sure that this was the last resort in which we had to move forward as far as balancing public safety, and at the same time, the preservation of trees. As many of you know, as a previous board member of Tree People, trees are important to me. However, this is an opportunity for us to look at trying to balance that. And so if I could briefly have the department make a quick presentation on this project for us.
Good morning, my name is Masih Hashemi, the project manager at the Bureau of Engineering. This project was conceived over 10 years ago because of the, exactly because of the traffic safety issues that have been quite a number of accidents for the past several years, because of the curvature of the roadway, the way it is. And we had come up with certain alternatives as to how to redesign the project, not to avoid the removal of the oak trees. And to our, in our opinion, basically the best way to do is to shift the roadway to the west to a certain extent, to removal of the additional trees that originally we were going to remove, and-
So you moved, you were originally going to go 80, an 80-foot highway, and you moved it to 70 to protect additional trees?
Absolutely, yes. And we also shifted the roadway to the west to a certain extent. We have built, we are building retaining walls on the east side of the street, so as to avoid the removal of the additional oak trees that are in the project site.
And is it my understanding that you're, the four trees that you are going to remove, you will replace with 34 oak trees?
Correct. We are going to remove them on a roughly eight-to-one ratio at the project site, at the, and at the park nearby, at the Howard Finn Park nearby. We're going to have 34 oak trees planted.
Is it possible to, again, depending on the outcome today, to have some of those trees looked at to be placed potentially on the other side, let's say, of Tahunga Canyon Boulevard? I mean, if we're taking them from one area particularly, if this goes through today, to be able to at least beautify similarly the same neighborhood in a way? Can we ask the department to look at alternatives that are there?
We looked into this, we hired a tree arborist, we looked into this to relocate the existing trees, as I understand, and because of the age of the trees, and because of the poor, relatively poor condition of the trees, he made a recommendation that it is, the trees will not be, will not survive if you were to relocate them.
I'm sorry, maybe to make myself clear. In the 34 trees that we are now going to plant, can some of those trees, those oak trees, be put near there? You know, and again, not blocking any view or creating another safety hazard, but if we're going to place oak trees, it would seem to me reasonable then to put it somewhere near that area to beautify the same community in which the trees were there prior.
Absolutely, we are doing exactly that. We are planting several trees in a park, a pocket park, right across the street, and we're going to actually place some 10 trees there, plant some 10 oak trees there, to beautify the area across the street, and then we're going to plant some oak trees within the street area as well.
Well, I know, I know this project has been going on since 1990, and that I am coming in at the end of this project, but it was important to me to make sure that we had looked at all of the alternatives. I know the action that was taken place relative to the removal of trees was in February this year, before I took office. What alternatives did you look at, and if you could identify the cost associated with doing something differently on that corner?
Okay. We considered to design the project such that to avoid the trees altogether completely. That was, that was one of the earliest alternatives that we considered, and in order to do that, because of the curvature of the roadway, the way it is, there were a couple of ways we can do this, to avoid the removal of the trees, is to, one, to shift the roadway to the west by a considerable distance, and then continue with the roadway to the south, and then join Honolulu Street. That would require us to take right-of-way acquisition, remove at least one or maybe two residential houses, that would require us to go before the county and get a permit to put a structural slab on the, on a existing channel at a considerable cost. And at that time, it, we have indication that it would be roughly at least $2 million to do all that, to bypass all these trees, these four trees, and do the redesign of the project. The other alternative that we considered at the time was to relocate the trees, remove them and plant them some, at some other location, as indicated earlier. A tree arborist consultant indicated that the trees would not likely survive if you were to do that, because of the poor condition of the trees.
So, and then, and what we have thus far, we've already incurred some expenses, is that correct?
Correct. The project is in construction right now. We have constructed some retaining wall, we have done some construction activities, and we have a contractor on board.
Do you have an estimate about how much we've spent thus far on this?
We processed the first progress payment, it was roughly $60,000. The second one has not come up, but I think it would be considerably more, probably in the range of maybe $150,000, at least $150,000.
And the total amount of this project?
Is $890,000.
$890,000, okay. As I, you know, mentioned, colleagues, in my opening, this is not an easy issue, and after this item came to my attention, and that there were some concerns, I had sent a letter to the department asking them to go back and look at these alternatives. And I think that as difficult as it is to remove any trees, that public safety obviously is the number one concern, and that it sounds like that the alternatives that you looked at were substantially higher than the current cost, and that we would have to assume the costs we've already incurred in addition to that. So it would go from an $800,000 to anywhere, to a $5 to $8 million project in that area. I do think I want to make one comment, that in some of the response back on letting the public know, even though there were notices put on the trees, and there were different things that were done, that I think also noticing the neighbors who live around that area, do a little better outreach, so that there is an educated populace there that understands both sides, and that we have people participate in that public review process. And so I would just ask, as you go back to the department, and I see one of your commissioners here, the importance of making sure in these kinds of things that we go the extra mile on that, and she's shaking her head, so thank you, Janice, that that will happen in this area. I'd also like to, we have an organization called the Theater Payne Foundation, which is located off La Tuna Canyon, which has native plants from California. And not that we have to buy the trees from there, but what I'd like to do is we, as we select what kinds of trees we're going to put, that we also look at native California trees as well, and work closely with an organization and individuals who care about the placement of the trees, and secondarily, the kinds of trees that we're going to have participating. So, colleagues, I just wanted to make sure we continued this item last week because of these questions. We have grilled the department, not today, we were nice, but in other instances, to make sure that we had looked at all the alternatives, and that in this instance, the public safety concerns unfortunately outweigh the four trees. But I think between the fact that you will be putting 34, I think we're only required to do a one-to-one, is that correct?
Normally, two-to-one, right.
Normally, a two-to-one replacement, that this has, the 34 is going to be great, but I really want to make sure that we do put it in that same neighborhood. And one last question at the end, and thank you for my time, Mr. Padilla, I know I've gone over a little bit, is some of the trees will be saved. How many of the total that are there? I mean, I know we're taking out four.
Right, we're, we would, we're trying to save additional, the five to six trees that are very close to the construction retaining, retaining wall area. And right now, we have a arborist on board, an expert on board, and he's advising us how to save these trees. And we're hoping that we can save those trees, so that we don't have to remove any additional trees. We have a tree expert on board already.
Well, I hope, again, that you'll keep us, keep me informed, the council, on those items, and those additional trees, and utilize all resources to protect them, and not only your design, but in the maintenance of that area to ensure that they don't fall to the wayside in that instance.
Absolutely.
So, council colleagues, if I could ask for your approval today, this item, with some of the amendments I've made in ensuring that we place some of those trees within that vicinity, and to do this for a public safety reason. So thank you, Mr. President, for giving me such flexibility today. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Groll, other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on the agenda.
A public comment appeared, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. The council calls for Fred Scripture. If Mr. Scripture is still here, please come forward at this time.
There was a council meeting, or Board of Airport Commissioners meeting last week, and on the agenda, they turned over a rule where the resolution was going to be for Direct AV to be awarded a contract for the CCTV system at Tom Bradley International Airport. Johnson Controls petitioned that, petitioned that, and they overturned that award and gave it back to Johnson Controls. Oh, I'm sorry. What I'm requesting from you today is to actually, for a supermajority vote by the city council to overrule that award to Johnson Controls, and to reconsider Direct AV for that contract. The airport originally did not take Johnson Controls as the low bidder, even though they were apparent low bidder, they weren't qualified bidder. And they suggested in their resolutions for Direct AV to be awarded that contract. At the board meeting, they overturned that, and then requested Johnson Controls to raise their minority participation level from 14% to 30%. No other contractor got that same right, including Direct AV. I have here a petition objecting to the city and Board of Airport Commissioners award of item number six to Johnson Controls for their last week's agenda. If I could submit that to you.
Yes, thank you for your comments. We'll take that document, and we appreciate you coming to the council meeting.
Thank you.
This concludes the public comment period for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, I believe there are cards on the closed session, item number 55. Did you wish to take those matters up now?
Before going into closed session, absolutely, and all three cards are in 55E, so we shall hear from members of the public on this closed session item before going into closed session. Council calls for at this time Stephen Kane, followed by Steve, is it Fleischley, and Leslie Mintz?
Good morning. My name is Dr. Kane. I'm representing the state of California Regional Water Quality Control Board. My comments today will be brief, happily, and they will address the MS4 settlement between the city of Los Angeles, the county of Los Angeles, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and the environmental community, in which you will be discussing later today. First, I would like to compliment the city on its willingness to participate in the MS4 settlement discussion, as well on its willingness to work with the regional board to achieve water quality throughout the LA watershed. The expertise, support, and assistance provided by city council and by its staff has been most generous, has been much appreciated, and has greatly served to achieve our mutual goal, which is clean water throughout the LA region. With regard to the settlement discussion, the regional board will continually, continue to actively invite and involve city, county, and environmental community in its negotiations and discussions. In this context, the board would very much like to encourage the city to continue its good faith negotiations with all affected parties, including Hill to Bay and the Santa Monica Baykeeper, and to remain receptive to new and innovative approaches to making stormwater and urban runoff permits achievable. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Steve Fleischley, I'm the executive director of the Santa Monica Baykeeper. Thank you for allowing me to talk on this issue today. Last Friday, many of you showed great leadership in writing a letter to the governor, supporting the Los Angeles municipal stormwater permit, and encouraging the city to work cooperatively to achieve our common environmental goals. As I understand it, there may be a motion put forth before you today in closed session that in my mind, if you vote in favor of it, would be a strong vote against the environment. The environmental community does not agree with staff's position so far in terms of trying to- trying to resolve the disagreements on the municipal stormwater permit. And in fact, we believe that if you approve this, you will be drawing the line in the sand, essentially telling us that you agree with staff and that you disagree with our position, notwithstanding the fact that there will be future negotiations on this issue. We had seven hours of settlement meetings yesterday with the City of Los Angeles, the county, various other city representatives, and the Building Industry Association, as well as Playa Vista and the state board. I think it ended on a positive note, and we are going to continue those settlement discussions in early October. But for this council to essentially condone the settlement language that will be presented to you, again, makes that very, very difficult to go back and sort of, in fact, it makes it very difficult for me to be here today because I think we have ended on a positive note yesterday, and we need to move forward with those discussions before this council sort of commits itself to any sort of position. So I urge you to consider that in your deliberations today. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mintz.
Good morning, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The settlement proposal before you today is a work in progress. It is a moving target, and we ask you to refrain from authorizing it for that reason. We ask you to pursue every possible avenue of consensus. That was the reason for your charge to the Public Works and Environmental Quality Committee to direct us to negotiate. And we feel that there's no legal deadline, there's no exigent circumstance that would warrant a authorization of a settlement proposal today. We also feel that any political benefit of authorizing a settlement today is far outstripped by the damage to a cooperative relationship with the environmental community and the danger that you will prematurely commit yourselves to what we perceive is a negative course of action. Accordingly, don't let your policy be directed by fear of third-party litigation. We're here, we're now, we're trying to work with you. We were working with you this past Saturday at Coastal Cleanup Day when we cleaned up 100,000 pounds of trash. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on this item. Madam Clerk, anything before proceeding into closed session? Mr. Weiss.
I have some questions in open session on this item. Mr. President, I'm happy to address them now or wait for you to do your housekeeping.
Let's do some housekeeping first.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There is an excuse on the desk. Council President Padilla requests to be excused for personal business Friday, October 11th, to arrive at 11:30, and that meets council policy.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
That clears the desk for closed session.
Okay. Madam City Attorney, we have a request from Councilmember Weiss to have some questioning on a closed session item prior to going into closed session.
Right. And I, and I'll address it to, I'll address it to the attorney on the left, the attorney on the right, the attorney on the far right. We're going to go into closed session in a moment, and we're going to hear from, where's the other attorney? We're going to hear from that attorney over there.
Mr. Westhoff.
Mr., and he's over there as well.
By the post, yeah.
On a recommendation in this matter, and that's fine, that's appropriate. We can hear that in closed session. That presentation will then engender what to my mind is a public policy debate and which will be informed by the legal presentation that we hear. And I think it's advisable to have public policy debates in the open, in public. It would be my expectation that once we hear in closed session that any action we take and any debate we have on the public policy ramifications of that presentation ought to be done in the open. And I just wanted to hear from you legally on what you thought about that.
I, I think normally our advice is that public policy debates should be in public as much as possible. If it appears, though, that this is going to be something that affects the litigation, maybe when we're in closed session, we can see exactly where we're going and then come out into open session afterwards if, if it's appropriate.
Well, I mean, I have public policy reasons why I think we ought to vote a certain way on the presentation. I'd like to make those in open session because I think they ought to be part of the public debate. So I guess we'll, we'll go to closed session, but I just want to lay this down as a marker that I think that this is not entirely a closed session, but I wait to hear from my council on that.
Well, I think what City Attorney is saying, correct me if I'm wrong, is through the closed session discussion, we will be able to better determine what we can and should discuss in open session after the closed session. Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, we all want clean water, clean air, clear, clean air, protect our bay, collect all the trash and garbage even before we get to the end point. And some people make a practice of filing lawsuits. When you establish a standard that's so stringent that even you know you can't meet, it opens the door for a lawsuit. And that's why we said go ahead with the negotiations as we know that they are proceeding at this time. I know, I want to do what you want to do. I want the environment to be the best that it can be and the best management practices. And I would hope that all of the environmentalists receive it the same way, that the monies that they sue us for comes out of their pocket as well as ours. And there's some outstanding lawsuits already, which we obviously are going to lose because the standards cannot even be met. And what you do, you open door for more lawsuits.
Mr. Holden?
Let's go into closed, please, Mr. President. Let's, I have no problem going into closed session to discuss this issue. I don't see why we should do it in public session for, and then the end result will be those who object to it will have an understanding and a clear picture of the areas of the law that they can sue you on that you're in violation of. And I love them all, but I'm not about to give it all up.
Thank you. Without objection then, in a conformance of California law, the council now adjourn into closed session. Cigars, please clear the chambers. We are now back in open session of Los Angeles City Council. Take the next item, please.
Item number 55B is settlement in the case of Carnegie versus James Honadol in the amount of $360,000.
So moved by Mr. LeBarnes, seconded by Mr. Zahn. Next item, please.
Council needs to take a vote.
Just open the rolls on that. Close the rolls and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
55C is settlement in the case of Suarez versus Rafael Perez et al., and that's in the amount of $175,000.
Mr. S. moves, and Ms. Rule seconds. Open the rolls, please. Close the rolls and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Great. Next item, please.
55D is settlement in the case of Taplin versus Edward Ruiz et al., and that's in the amount of $182,000.
Mr. Padilla moves, Ms. Perry seconds. Please open the rolls, close the rolls, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Item number 60 is settlement in the case of Flores et al. versus the City of L.A. et al., and that's in the amount of $250,000. And Madam, sorry, that's item number 59.
Mr. Zahn moves that, Mr. Ellis seconds. Please open the roll and close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Item number 60 is settlement in the case of Triplet versus the LAPD, and that's in the amount of $175,000.
I'm going to remove that recommendation, open the rolls, close the rolls, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay. Do we have any other items for posting and referral?
Well, the desk is clear.
Okay. Any announcements, council members? I'd ask everybody to rise for adjourning motions. Any adjourning motions, council members? Ms. Perry.
I am doing this on behalf of Mark Ridley Thomas. Lorenzo Robert Adams, Sr. was born to Jillian Catherine Adams in Corsicana, Texas. He moved to Los Angeles at an early age where he graduated from Jefferson High School, worked for L.A. USD, where he retired after 35 years of service, and he then accepted another position as a speech aide, working with a learning impaired, and then he retired after 20 years of service in that position. He loved reading, sports, good movies, and traveling with his wife, Donna, to whom he was married for more than 63 years. He is survived by five children, Lorenzo, Bob, Jr., Donald, Lottie, Raymond, and David, daughter-in-law, James Setta, 18 grandchildren, and 24 great-grandchildren.
Thank you very much. Mr. Holden, is that an adjourning motion you have?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Holden?
For the sake of the president, this dear friend of mine is William Robert Bratton. Hey, Bill Bratton just passed away the 24th, a couple days ago. He's born in Texicana, Arkansas, graduate of Bishop College, Marshall, Texas, retired from the Hughes Aircraft Company after 38 years. The services are not yet decided upon, but he's survived by his son, Bill, Jr., two daughters, Shannon, Elizabeth, Corinne, eight grandchildren, sister Vera, brother Charles. Mr. Bratton worked with me at the Hughes Aircraft Company, and we had some tough times out there in the late 50s and early 60s. Things didn't always go as smoothly as they do today, and certainly it's not perfect, but it's better than it used to be. And we were able to get Bratton to comparte the personnel department. It was not until then that the minorities began to pass examinations for technician, engineering exams, before you could get hired, secretarial exams. Every minority candidate for becoming secretary out of 8,000 failed. And then this guy got in there, and they all was given equal opportunity as it was written. He has done so much for so many people in our community that we'll never know or could tell, talk about. And Bill, you, wherever you are, my friend, God bless you, receive you into heaven because that's where you deserve to be.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holden. Any other adjourning motions? At a time when we adjourned, those who have passed, it was inspiring to read. I'm sure many of us saw in the L.A. Times the story of somebody who was adrift at sea for four months and stayed alive and was caught at Los Angeles resident, Mr. Fran. We welcome him back, and certainly if he can survive at sea with almost nothing for four months, we too in our own lives can, can weather the greatest challenges. Will you please call the roll? Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.